6.9, consideration of discussion of a resolution of intention to form the Lake County Hospital Improvement District and setting a date for a public hearing. I did see we have a number of folks here in the room. We only have four seats, but I would love for some of you to get comfortable so that we can have a back and forth, have some questions, and also a presentation of the item. I am going to pass it on to CAO Parker to go ahead and kick us off and introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Chair. DCAO Ben Rickelman will be introducing this item with all the individuals from Sutter Hospital.
Do you have more chairs?
One of these, any of them is fine. This is fine. Good afternoon, Ben Rickelman. I'm a Deputy County Administrative Officer for the County of Lake. We have the administrators for Sutter Lakeside Health and Adventist Health Clear Lake, the two hospitals here in Lake County, and their council regarding this improvement district. I'm going to let Chuck Cassis and Tim Stevens take it away and give an intro over the need of this and kind of how this mechanism works, and happy to interject at any time.
Please take it away. And you're going to have to talk into the microphone or else I'm going to get some looks from the videography guy in the back, Sam.
Okay. Can you guys hear us? Okay.
Yes.
So thank you for allowing us time today to present this, and I do want to point out this is a joint action from, I'm Tim Stevens, I'm the CEO at Sutter Lakeside Hospital, thank you Chuck. And this is a joint action with the two hospitals coming together and how we can improve the services and what we're providing in the community, really around building sustainability for the health systems. As you know, rural healthcare is a challenging environment to work in. There's not a lot of sustainability as we look at seismic requirements and investments in the community. So we're really looking at how do we create the next 70 years of healthcare in this community? And our organization's been here 70-plus years, and I know Adventist has as well, so we're really looking at that. And this is a mechanism that will allow us to do that without impacting the local taxpayers or the local public in any sense in that, but it will allow us to invest more and create sustainability in the community.
Good afternoon, Chuck Cassis, Hospital Administrator at Adventist Health Clear Lake. You know, this is a collaborative effort. We're here together because our two hospitals run at a negative deficit annually. And in order to continue to provide the great care that we're able to provide our community, we need other sources of revenue streams to come in to be able to augment what we're doing. It's not going to come from the government straight up. It's not going to come from a large source of commercial patients coming into the area. We have to be creative in how we look at things, and this is one way that we can do it without impacting the community. These are dollars that are there that the state could access, but they don't. And so we're going to utilize this improvement district to be able to tap into those resources, to be able to hopefully get us to a break-even point so we can continue on.
And I'll just add, high level, so utilizing the 1994 Public Benefit Improvement District. So it's typically used for place-based community or economic development. It can be either a property-based or a business-based assessment. This would be a business-based assessment for just these two hospitals. So they would be the only two entities participating, the only two that would be assessed. It would be on their net patient revenue. And utilizing this assessment will then be leveraged to get more money from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So the federal entity that controls those two federal health programs. So basically, they're assessing themselves to get more money from the federal government through the calculation for Medicaid reimbursement, CalMed here. I'll let council maybe go into a little more detail of that process.
And just real quick, I was reminded by my colleague, I just want to make sure that we do introductions so the public knows who's speaking. I apologize for that, thank you both for doing so. Ben, if we can start with you, and then we'll move on to council.
Sure.
Ben Rickelman, I'm a Deputy County Administrative Officer here at Lake County Government with a focus on economic development.
I'm Jim Derset with the law firm of Derset &amp; Lorenz, and I represent both Sutter and Adventist.
Zach Vigtinbaum with Derset &amp; Lorenz as well.
All right, thank you. And I apologize, I interjected. Any other further comments for your presentation? Are you open for questions and comments?
I would just make, like, just to make clear, it was kind of already stated. So with this assessment, two things. One is it's not going to have an impact on patient billing here. So with people getting medical service at these two hospitals, they're not paying to support this. Number two, as required by the bid law, this additional revenue is not going to support existing services. It has to be above and beyond kind of current spending. So the two hospitals have plans that they could speak to in further detail what the spending would go towards.
Please. And this would be the management district plan, AKA plan as it says in the agreement?
So specifically in that, really looking at the seismic upgrades for our hospital, talking about some of the specific things we're spend on. Money around MRI and imaging upgrades are currently, you know, things that we're working on and working towards. Increasing our ambulatory footprint throughout the county in that space as well. And then just, you know, the seismic upgrades are pretty substantial in that. And I know the state law was just going through kind of what those requirements are and trying to delay on that because they continue to go on that. So a lot of it comes into that sustainability. There are programs that are, we're going that's going to create sustainability for our organization and allow us to do more. But, and as I've mentioned to many people, when the hospitals are being supplemented by outside money to the point we can't invest into the community when we're at a loss. So Sutter looks at, in 2022, Sutter Lakeside Hospital lost $5.5 million from operations. That $5.5 million was passed over to Sutter, to us, to maintain operations on that. So going forward, being able to sustain operations means that we can go into growth mode and do more for the community in that sense. We're currently restricted on capital investments because, you know, when you're at a loss, you can't generate income to create more investments in the community.
And our plan echoes the same things that Tim outlined. They would go for very much similar projects.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Green.
Hi. A-plus for creativity, but I hope we have counsel here. Because I'm going to start off with the observation that under the citation you offer under the Street and Highways Code that would allow you enough wiggle room to attempt this, I'm not seeing it. And I'm looking not just at the particular law that you cited, but the whole canon under Street and Highways where over the past 100 years plus, the state has examined the creation of parking areas, parking districts, improvements that would benefit business districts. And I guess the common theme in there is the notion of a district containing multiple businesses or areas where commercial activities are happening. The word improvements looms large. Improving your bottom line is not improvement as used in the context of these laws. So again, the A-plus for creativity, but what you're proposing here is very unusual. If I heard right, it would be the first one in the state of California. And I don't know, and you know, County Council can loop himself in at some appropriate time. But my initial reading of this, not being a lawyer, is, other than the A-plus for creativity, I just can't hang my hat on anything that you're proposing here. So lacking any district, I get that the hospitals are the businesses, but I don't get that the district is there. I don't see any improvements in this ask. And because of the time-limited nature of this particular assessment, the things you're talking about, your business models are chronic problems, you know? It ain't going to get easier on that reimbursement front in five years. So even if we agree this is the best mousetrap to approach this particular issue with, it doesn't appear to me to be sustainable because it's at best a very temporary fix. You're going to come back and ask us to re-up on this idea time and again. So can you just speak to the big elephant in the room? I don't see a district of, I see like-minded businesses, definitely in the same financial straits. I don't see the districts, other than the countywide district that the hospitals serve, and I don't see the improvements that the assessment that you're going to place on yourself would create. So can you walk me through that, turning the council or whoever else you want to do that?
Did the County Council want to start, or you want me to have Zach start with the history of the?
Let's go ahead and start with you guys.
Okay. Zach will, there are a bunch of questions in there, which is okay. If we miss some, just let me know. Zach is going to start kind of with the history of what you're talking about because it is interesting. There's a lot of business improvement districts in the state of California. It's one of the only states that has something like this. And I actually didn't understand the history either, why it's there. Interestingly, Zach does understand the history, so he will walk you through what we understand of it.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Green. So I think that we would completely agree and concede that the parking improvement area of the, that in its early progeny or the initial statutes were incredibly limited. And they go back, I think there are about half a dozen iterations in the last 100 years. The earliest one was very restricted to just when cars were becoming more and more prevalent and localities recognized the need for, we need parking spaces and street lighting. Since then, it is the legislative history and just the practical use of these, excuse me, has evolved to locality saying, wow, these limited uses work really, really well, and we need, as localities, broader latitude. And so I think that as you'll see, as you move from the, you know, the original very restricted through the 89 law and now the most recent, the 94 law, the, from a legal standpoint, the uses that localities have really broad discretion in how they use, so much so that today there are hundreds, and we appreciate the applause for the creativity, but we don't think it's that creative. Today, this is exactly how you operate, how the county operates, the Lake County Tourism Improvement District, where you have a group of hospitals, sorry, hotels or lodging businesses that have come to you and asked to tax themselves to pool resources, to hopefully generate more resources. And we think it's essentially not distinguishable from that. There are tourism, uses for tourism and lodging businesses and hotels is by far the most common in the state of California. But there are ones for restaurants and that also rely on the 94 law. So that's where we are.
I would distinguish them, but I'm not going to belabor that point. And again, I think the number of businesses, TID you mentioned, for example, or restaurants, much bigger chunks of beneficiaries. So you can expand on that if you want, but it's not critical to my thing. It is creative, and I'll leave it at that.
It's different. They don't have any for the Medicaid program in the state. There are a number of different programs that you have that draw exactly the same mechanism, utilize the same theory as we're utilizing here for this county. The difference is in this county, they're saying, will you help us help ourselves? And you're right, there's only two hospitals. I have no idea what the economic impact is of those two hospitals in these communities. But it's very rare that it's not a large economic handicap on a rural community, which is why a lot of rural communities do these across country for this exact reason. Shockingly, states are not going to come and help all the rural hospitals. They try, but they can't help them as much. From a sustainability standpoint, unless the state starts paying up to the Medicaid maximum amount, I have no idea why this would ever go away. The programs I have designed across the country are 25 years old. I'm an old man. It's, they don't go away. People ask every year what happens with so-and-so is going to be elected. Like, I don't know, it's a Medicaid program, it's a government, who knows what's going to happen tomorrow? But they've never gone away yet. California relies on hospital provider taxes for how many billion dollars of healthcare for Medicaid program?
12-ish?
12 billion today, so we'd be adding 30 million whole dollars. Pretty small amount for the state of California, but for the county, it makes a big difference. On an improvement standpoint, I don't know how the business improvement districts that are tourism or anything else can prove out that additional revenue is going to show improvement into their facilities. But I certainly understand, and I don't know Chuck's hospital as well, but a critical access hospital, they're operating with shoestrings and mousetraps. And so additional revenue to these guys is going to generate additional resources to serve your community. And again, I don't know how much the community goes to the hospitals versus the hotels. I would guess a lot of the community goes to the hospitals and uses them. But I had to get here from Sonoma, and there doesn't seem like a lot of stuff around here. Very pretty place. So you guys can talk about improvements to hit that piece of the commissioner.
Yes, thank you. I would like to speak to improvements. I know I talked about sustainability, but I want to talk about what we don't do if we don't have sustainability. You talk about the bottom line, which that's one way to look at it. But without improvement on that, we don't make investments. And I can lay five investments that we're trying to make that we're not able to make at this point, and Chuck will be able to do very similar for them. So seismic upgrades for our hospital, about $15 million, we're in phase three.
And pause there. Without these seismic upgrades, the state of California could basically shut us down. So we have to be seismically compliant to the state's law by 2023, or 2030.
Okay, let's ride with that. If you had come to us with a plan for a bond or measure or something like that, or an improvement district that would fund that type of actual improvement, you have two of the things I'm looking for. I'm looking for actual improvement, I'm looking for tangible assets that will be created through that funding. TID, you're right, it's a little nebulous, but there's at least tangible assets. We have websites, we have third-party contractors. We have some idea that we want to improve the fortunes of, again, multiple businesses through these activities. This proposal, again, doesn't speak directly to tangible assets or improvement of the facilities such that is typical under this area of state law. I'm not saying this isn't a great idea using other areas or other mechanisms. Waiting on the feds, yeah, I don't think I'm young enough to get that done either. But it's just, I need that improvement. I need that nexus with the Street and Highways Code here.
So I'm going to try to interject. I just want to make sure that we hear from other board members, just because I don't want to keep responding to a question that may be from a minority perspective. It might still need to be discussed a little further, but I'd love to hear from other board members.
You mentioned TID, and there was nothing really in place in the beginning either, but just the thought of forming it so that they can create some sort of funding to help attract people to come here. So I think, I see this in that stage when it started in 2018, 2019. So I don't see it the same way. I think it's a good idea, so we've got to try something.
Any other comments or questions? So I do have a couple of comments and questions. Whether you want to call it creative or not, I like the idea of how can we enhance healthcare in Lake County? We know that costs are going up, we're looking at increased costs on our end. How do we make sure that we maintain at the very least what we have, if not being able to get more? Again, not going to harp on it just because it's negative, but we don't have the best health metric outcomes, and we need to ensure we at least don't go further down. There's a couple of things in here that I just want to ask briefly. One is, and it almost contradicts a little bit some of the stuff that you say. I think you guys contribute back to the community. It's not just your hospital and your clinics. What I want to make sure is, and I was talking to CAO Parker regarding this, I don't know what the terminology is, she's telling me it's not supplanting. I thought it was called maintenance of effort, we'll see what that is. But the idea that whatever you're already contributing back to the community to support, because the healthcare systems we have today have not always been the same healthcare systems that you guys are running today. At one point, there was a shift where, and maybe it was a national switch and not just a Adventist Health or Sutter Health switch, but the idea that healthcare starts in the community, not once you walk through the doors of a hospital. And so I've been seeing a lot more activities within the community, and I greatly appreciate that because it creates a better partnership, in my opinion. But what you're already doing, I want to make sure it doesn't just get swapped over with what you're going to get from doing the Hospital Improvement District, and that it complements what you're already doing. And so I don't know if there's a way to kind of term that, that it will add to all the activities that you're already engaged in with the community so that there's greater benefits and not just the same as it was before, and now you're getting extra access to funds that you didn't have access to before. The other part, it does speak to a plan, and I feel like there should be a written plan. I don't know if that's Exhibit A, I don't believe it is. But it speaks to a district management plan, or I don't have it right in front of me. And I think that granted, today is just a day to say, yes, we approve to go for the protest vote. But I would think that that needs to be, or whatever the vote is. But I think that needs to be made available to really understand what is that, that plan that you're discussing so that it's not this nebulous idea of, and I appreciate some of the details that you've provided today, but I think that needs to be a document that we can hold and read and ensure that we can hold you accountable to that when we say, hey, these are the things you try to convince us to vote yes on because of these things. And I see that, I did something because Mr. Rickelman is here.
He's going to beat us to it.
There is a proposed district management plan, so it's electronic version. I can send it out to the board members, and we can also post it with the item.
Okay. I think it would be really helpful to have that. There's one other thing that I sent you in a text as my question that I can't remember.
Consumer protection for pricing.
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that, and this was discussed, but I don't see it in there, and I don't even know how to write it in. Healthcare cost changes, your insurance is just as bad as our insurance. You have to deal with doctor's insurance and hospital insurance and all those things. So I know that costs rise and we can't say you're frozen. But I just want to make sure that your consumer costs aren't going to change because now you're taxing yourself. I want to make sure that our folks have the same level of access at the same cost as things progress outside. So those were some of my concerns. I think the idea of the district is not even an issue for me. We have a perfect example of this, of the Tourism Improvement District. Hotels are all over the place, they don't have to be in one specific location. You identify hospitals, we have a lot of clinics and a lot of healthcare providers, but not more than the two hospitals. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward. I think this is an interesting concept, and it mirrors what I've seen be successful in Clear Lake, where they've taxed themselves for roads, which has opened up new fundings that are available at the state level because they're taxing themselves. You would be doing the exact same thing, and this money would be coming here in this location. So those are my comments. I'm going to call on Supervisor Pisca since she has her pen up.
Yeah, I mean, we've been working on the TID for so many years now, even unofficially before I was on this board. And so watched it grow from a tiny little baby. And it is, the impact is always going to be nebulous on that, even though we do have a handful of assets, including websites. It's really hard to know. But I think that this could have some clear impacts. And I just, you know, I think it just needs to be said over and over that the impact to the patient will be zero. Right, yeah, just say that a lot. However, though, with these expansions and investments and improvements, then we know that there's actually going to be quite a lot of benefits for the patients. And you were talking about pricing, and we know that going to get services at rural hospitals, like if you need to get an MRI, are way more expensive here. And so is there a possibility that those types of prices, pricing could be competitive, more competitive than they are now with new investments?
Yeah, can I answer a couple of different things that were brought up at one time, if I may?
Please.
As far as community benefit goes, you talk about where we do what we're doing now and do more. And as, if I can go as a business person and operator of a hospital, and I know many people are, currently we are resource scarce. So I can't do everything I want to do now because I'm managing this budget, I'm managing this, and I have to, I have scarce resources, I have to manage that way. So not having to manage that and having resources that I can pull from will make a genuine difference in what we're able to do in the community in a meaningful way in the public health forum, which I think you're referring to. How do we get into the community anymore and get healthy in that space? And, you know, we're working a lot of things on that, you know, even the park we're talking about down in Middletown. That's really looking at population health, how do we get people outside? And so we're looking at how we make a difference in that space and in that. And when you just barely make it and you don't know how you're going to keep yourself open, then you can't think about that. And I applaud Adventist and Sutter and our prior administrators who have done in that space when there's not been resources available. This will make it easier to do that and easier to go into that space. Costs for patients and how systems are priced, right or wrong, we don't do cost-based pricing. Our pricing is set across system levels on that, and it's based on the cost of Medicare. It's not based on the cost of services on that. If we priced out services and priced it that way, they'd be all over the places. It's not priced in a logical way. So there's no relation to this and how we price services and how we do that. The opposite, when you're losing money, the figure out how to get more money coming in tempts you to raise prices. But we, Sutter and what I know about Adventist, none of the hospitals are allowed to raise individual prices within that. It's a market look at that prices and how we do the pricing on that. That way, we're sure that we're being fair consistently across that. There's been a lot of health systems over the years have been in trouble for varying prices across that. So we try and be very consistent in that. And what we have done is look and see where we may be out of line on prices with some of our other areas around us to see how we get better in that space. And then both organizations offer sliding scales, Medi-Cal sign-up, and other ways to help people that don't have that. So we, our community benefit dollars for, Sutter Health was over a trillion dollars last year. What we did across all the communities that Sutter serves, and that's our 800 million, it was almost a trillion in that space. So the amount of care that Sutter's providing that's not compensated for is enormous. And his amount of care here locally, we don't ask anybody, do you have insurance? We care for the person that walks in our door. And I know my partner Adventist says the same.
Yeah, our mission's not going to change with or without these dollars. We will still do all the things that we do for the community. This most recent fire that was almost right behind the hospital. We've got our shower trailers out there right now, providing showers for people who are displaced, who don't have a place to get clean so that they can go to work. We're doing that. That work is not going to stop, whether we get this, these dollars or not. I would like to address one thing that Supervisor Green brought up. And I do think that, why this is different and why this could be so impactful is that you say no cost to the patient. But I think more importantly, there's no cost to the community. So no resident, whether you come to our hospital or not, is going to be impacted if this goes forward. These are dollars that are already there that we will be able to get back without a cost to the community. And so versus a bond where we would actually try to leverage something, this actually probably is a better solution for us.
I can add two of the questions real quick. In the specific language of the documents, we have prohibited them from passing any costs on to the patients or the community. So that has been addressed ahead of time. They wouldn't have done it anyway, but we put that in there for you. On the quality piece, if this gets through where we want it to go, there actually is a requirement under federal law that we have a quality component to the program. So we'll have to meet that as well. So a certain amount of quality will have to be developed into the program. Once we get to the state level, we'll decide from, we don't get to decide anything. The state will tell us, and the feds will tell us, here's the quality initiatives that we think are most important. We will say, here's what's important in Lake County, because you're going to be different than the rest of the country, just because you're like, everyone's different. And we will try and work those in. And we will try and work those in, but that will be part of the funding that they come in. It comes with hooks, and one of the hooks is you have to meet your quality standards that are set up under this program.
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate the collaboration here because it wasn't that long ago when it was competitive, and it only makes-
It's still competitive from an interest.
Okay. All right. But we are in the same room together, sitting down, working on a collaborative approach to serve all of the members of our region. So I just want to say that I appreciate both of you bringing this.
I do want to comment on that. Last week, we were discussing other issues in the community without money associated with how we can work together as health systems. So this collaboration is not surface for this. It's true and genuine in what we're trying to do for the community.
Yeah, I've been, I've noticed in a lot of other spaces, too.
Supervisor Simon?
I appreciate it. You hear me use the word all the time, thinking outside of the box, doing things we haven't done. So I appreciate the collaboration, Ben. I appreciate the conversations that are happening, you know. Been hearing a little something about something's coming to us, so excited to see this stuff. We'll see. A couple of technical questions. You said you've set these up in other states or anything. So if this was to be challenged, besides the voters who have to say something, who would it be challenged by? Who would, who would challenge this? Where would the challenge come from?
You know, the feds aren't really going to say anything at all about this, because this is not going to be a federal issue. This will be the state, if they have some other, if they have a beef against Lake County. I've been told they don't, but it's a state. No idea if there's somebody that just has an out for you, or if the state is coming up with something else that they think this gets in the way of. That's the only thing that I can think of that anyone would care about from a negative standpoint. In all the various states, we're in 35 or 40 states or something like that. So it doesn't change. Politics doesn't change, people, how they attack don't change. When you have both hospitals in the community, if there's a small hospital in the community that's going to be taxed and doesn't do any Medicaid, they would come after it hard.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we're looking at it with a clear, long-term picture.
If there was a specialty hospital that didn't do Medicaid, they would say, I don't want this because you're going to get paid Medicaid increases. That's your, that is your tangible asset, is money. You're going to improve your, your dollar signs under the Medicaid program. How they use that is what they're, what you guys are talking to them about. But that's what this is going to develop for you, is you're going to have more physical dollars coming in for the Medicaid population.
Okay, appreciate that. I just wanted to ask that question and look at that. The other thing is, you know, something we need here in the community is cancer care, care for cancer. We send these poor folks that are dealing with the worst thing you can deal with. My mother died of lung cancer, so it's horrible, but you gotta travel an hour. Doesn't matter if you're going to Ukiah, doesn't matter if you're going anywhere. Would this be a possibility? I know you can't say yeah right now, but god darn, we need it really bad. So anyway, I'm throwing that out there. You don't have to answer, but I'm hoping or being optimistic.
I can, I would answer and welcome. You know, we are talking about that within Sutter, how we can achieve that. We haven't figured it out yet because it is, the sustainability of a cancer program is bigger dollars than we're talking about here, honestly. But we are looking at that, how we could sustain it. We've brought a model that I saw in Washington where three hospitals came together and joint ventured a cancer center. So I think this is a first step of Sutter and Adventist Health coming together and saying, are there opportunities to joint venture locally to scale up, to be able to provide services? But that's not a promise. It's just, it's things that we have to look at differently because neither hospital's big enough to run a cancer service in town and split it. So we need to look at how we can do it together, and, you know, this is kind of that first step with other things that we're working on.
So for me, as long as this is a first step to open up that conversation a little bit more, that's a positive step forward because we all know, sitting on different boards, L T A, A P C, Lake Links, you know, how we get these folks out of the county to these places is really important. The other thing, ultimately, I won't hash over everything that's been talked about, and Bruno, this is not a 218 process, or this is a 218 process, so I'll make sure.
It's not a 218.
Thank you very much, Ben.
It's business, not property.
Yeah, right.
Done with that.
Okay, just making sure. The other thing is, in one of the whereas's here, I think the county will request consent from the city of Clear Lake to form the proposed district that encompasses the prospective jurisdiction as required by district law. Have those conversations happened, or if we vote today, then those conversations will happen? I'm really hoping we, everybody's waiting for us to say yes or no.
I presented to the city of Clear Lake last week and was very well received. And so depending upon your work here, it will then allow me to go back to the city and get the resolution from them.
Excellent. I want to make sure. I hadn't heard that yet, so.
And while not a requirement for Lakeport to support this, I've been to the Lakeport City Council as well and have a statement, a resolution from them supporting this, you know, in theory. They don't have a jurisdiction.
Yeah, Sutter's in the county, so I understand why it's only Clear Lake on there.
But I just wanted to wrap around and tell you kind of the efforts that we've gone to make sure we create community alignment around this activity and what we're trying to do here. We don't have to have Clear Lake, I'm sorry, Lakeport support us, but we want their support. We want broad community support for what we're trying to do.
We heard our conversation earlier on a support letter, as much support and being focused on it is really important to bring into Lake County. So if you guys understand where I'm going with this, I am in support of this, but I had some questions I wanted to ask, so.
And that should bring out, if there's anybody for any crazy question that comes out, with them going to the cities, that'll get it deeper down in the level. Is there someone that would have a problem with this to one of your other questions? I can't imagine they would, but that'll help to find that out.
And just to comment on process, so this is with the 94 P B I D law, this is a resolution of intention. We then, even though there's only two entities, we still have to mail ballots, and then once that starts, it starts a 45-day clock, and then we can have the public hearing, and then the resolution of formation is the last step by the county government if it goes forward. And then just another process comment regarding county operations and collection. We would collect a 1% fee for managing this because it does have impact with the treasurer collector on staff time. And then also with that, this does still require state and federal approval, as mentioned, so the assessment would not be dispersed to the hospitals until that happened. So we would make sure we had all the legal approvals on the levels of governments before kind of the operation of this assessment district would happen.
I'm gonna go to Supervisor Green and then come back to you, Supervisor Green.
Okay, just very quickly, I have read the plan. Thank you for sending that along, Mr. Rickelman. The plan is this, we collect the money, $15 million a year, if I read right, close to $85 million over the five-year term, and we send it to the state. And that's the plan.
Right now it is because the state has to send to the federal government to get approval to increase the Medicaid payment.
So we're basically a pass-through entity for Medi-Cal reimbursement, and because of the district, all of a sudden, the feds recognize that as a, as a cost share of sorts. But if you guys copped up your same money and didn't involve the county and just took it on the thing you would, so basically, we're a pass-through that allows, here's the difference between other T I Ds. They may have six digits, maybe even five digits in their annual budgets. Your proposal is literally almost $85 million over the five-year term. So whether it's a pass-through or not, whether we get 1% or not, I guess I'd like to see more meat and potatoes to the plan than we're just collecting the money and helping you pay off the state and hoping that you get some return on that investment. And I don't even see in the plan where you've calculated that R O I, you know, much less how, again, there's any actual improvements being done here other than survival. So I will ask County Council before we take a vote whether this is legal under state law as presented, and I'll leave it at that.
Well, the formation of the, this business improvement, the B I D Business Improvement District is certainly up to your board. As Mr. Rickelman stated, what's before your board today is a resolution of intent to form a district. The details, additional details to the actual formation will come out of the public hearing, any protests that may arise from that, as well as the resolution of formation. Those are the subsequent steps here. As far as whether or not this can even be brought before your board or whether it's prohibitively banned from being heard from your board under the Streets and Highways Code, under those set of procedures, it can be presented to your board as a resolution of intent for your board's consideration.
Supervisor Simon? Thank you.
I was thinking long-term, as we talk about the tribal nations here, 20,000 years of history, we're going forward also. I myself, many leaders, we need a tribal hospital here in Lake County, tribal-owned, tribally-operated. Down the road, I don't know how this affects Ben, or if you had had any conversation with Lake County Tribal Health or anything, you know, I don't know, but we always want to be thinking about those things also, about the seven nations here. You know, I've been a big advocate, talking about it for years, we need a little whole tribal hospital, if we can have one. There's not one in California. You know, many other states, obviously, with tribes have those, we don't have that here. I don't know how that affects it down the road, but just thinking long-term, maybe it doesn't happen in my lifetime, but it's definitely needed. So just want to make sure in consideration of all communities, everything, not trying to put a stop to anything today, but thinking long-term, you know, that's where we're going. You know, I know we talked about Cultural Center, and I was involved in those conversations early on at the Anderson Marsh, and, you know, so we've gone away, but we'll come back. But a hospital is something that's much needed here for the tribal communities, just for our own folks. That's, when I have to go in for, that's where I would like to be, but we're not there yet. So just putting it out there, I don't know.
Yeah, so the district by state law can only be five years initially. It could then can be, future extensions can be 10 years, so this isn't set in stone for a long, long time. So it can be modified in the future for different participating entities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's basically following the same rules as we experienced with the T I D. It was five years then, then now we just have a 10-year one. So it feels and sounds very familiar. I did have a couple more questions, and I appreciate it. You brought up the cost to the county, the, from the tax collector to the auditor controller. You mentioned 1%, but I do not see the 1%. Is that not going to be in this? Are we doing a separate M O U where there's an understanding of that 1% and it's separate from this? That this only impacts the idea of what the hospital improvement, I know it's not called that, it's, I want to say child, it's got all those letters. But this obviously creates, it says what the percentage is that will be assessed on both hospitals. The rest will be separate. Mr. Sullivan?
Patrick Sullivan, Lake County Treasurer Tax Collector. I can speak to some of that. I did have the opportunity to meet with everyone here, which I appreciate, and I addressed some of the initial concerns and questions that I had. The draft district plan, I believe, reflected that we would be able to bill for our costs. We actually agreed, kind of like how we do with the L C T I D, that it would be better to have a flat rate. The L C T I D actually has a higher rate, it's 2%, but because of the scale of this, 1% was determined to be more appropriate in terms of the county's cost. I mean, we, I still retain the concern that in the future with audits or, you know, some other unforeseen event that could come up, that those costs could be higher. But in discussions, should that situation ever arise, it was indicated that we could revisit that at the time. So as long as that capacity is there, I don't think I have too much concern. Compared to the L C T I D, the mechanics of this are a lot more straightforward. We're only collecting from two entities that have indicated they voluntarily intend to pay. So that is sort of a different world for us in our office. If we're not having to take enforcement action or pursue anyone, that really limits the impact on our office. So considering that we're going to wait for federal and state approval before we distribute funds, you know, under the current plan, I think our office should be able to handle it, and our concerns have been addressed.
And I apologize, I may have missed it, but are you planning to do a separate M O U for what that looks like as far as getting the payment from the assessed amount to cover your costs and the auditor controller's costs?
Typically for these, you would want all of that reflected in the district plan. So the ultimate iteration of district plan should have all of that refined. That would be my perspective, but.
Okay.
How long would you anticipate holding those funds before they're sent?
So that may be a question for Adventist and Sutter up here. We would plan at this time on collecting on a quarterly basis. There has to be a reconciliation at the county level between the treasurer tax collector and the auditor controller before those funds can be dispersed. But before we can do that, we have to have the information about what payment is due, since this is reflecting that share, that contribution. We're going to need to figure out a mechanism to verify that, I mean, through both the hospitals and the state, and I am not completely clear on what that process will be yet.
So we can talk about what to do with the interest income?
That would probably be a point for discussion, yeah. Depending on how long it sits on our account, there is the interest associated with that, and whether we're trying to break that out and include it in their balance, or whether we're retaining that, that is not presently addressed in the plan.
So this is not my first time saying this today, but did not get the chance to review my full agenda until I finished everything last night at about 11 o'clock. We're talking about the district plan, but the district plan is not attached to the attachment. And I feel that it needs to be in front of us before we say, yes, let's go out and solicit, I mean, granted, it feels like you're so undecided right now. We're obviously going to get two responses, and that's what we're looking for, for this end vote 45 days later, but I also don't see the details of the plan, and it speaks to the plan, and I don't know if it was a missed exhibit or a missed attachment that was not connected, but I feel like there's some details in there that we're discussing today, which is great, but I feel that seeing it in writing and that that's what will be attached if we approve something today, that that's important for us to have in front of us.
So I did have it as just electronic referral to the clerk. I used, I wanted to stay with previous resolution language. I've seen kind of similar with this P B I D's formations, but I'm happy, the plan exists. I'm happy to post it and send it right away.
Okay. And then we will come back, and we still have to make a final decision, and I think that having that in front of us as soon as possible is going to be important, especially we're talking about the 1%. That means we're actually stuck with those things, but I think it's important for it to be there. Just had a couple other quick questions. I appreciate the conversation with Lakeport. I think it's important that eventually, maybe five years down the road, if this goes forward, that we do have this countywide. There may not be a hospital in Lakeport, but if there's ever the opportunity to, it will treat everybody the same. So I, that's, that's what I'm thinking of for the future. And then in the whereas's, just a random thing, I knew I had seen it when I was reading it, it took me a while to find it, but in the second whereas, I'm not sure why it took me so long when it's the second one, it says licensed as general acute care hospitals. Are you identified as general acute care and not access, critical access hospitals? Is that the right terminology? Because it does say by the California Department of Public Health, so I don't know what their identification of you would be, but does that work, that it's general acute care and not general access or critical access care hospital?
It does work, they're both, they're licensed as both. And so the specificity just comes from what you were referencing earlier about not wrapping in clinics and things like that.
Okay. All right. I'm out of questions at this moment in time, and I would think we're going to open it up for public comment.
Hi, Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. I don't think we have the pleasure of meeting. I met you several times. I have no objection to moving forward. Certainly, any revenue to expand healthcare in Lake County is welcome and critically needed, especially in the primary care space. What I am aware of is that in Lake County, there are significant behavioral health needs that have to be met in an acute setting. For example, A S A M Level Four Detox, which is medically monitored detox, is something that we do not have in county. We're required to have that under the O D S waiver. And to date, there has not been very strong partnership with the hospital systems around behavioral health needs. Similarly, we have really extensive behavioral health needs that end up in the acute setting in the E Ds. It's not ideal for anybody. We would love our people not to be in an E D and to have some other setting to go to for medical clearance to an acute psychiatric hospital. That doesn't exist. But my hope is that the board can keep an eye on the deliverables for this and ensure that those particular needs, as regards our county, we hold the hospital accountable to, and as much as we can, encourage them to participate in good faith with our needs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment in the chamber? All right, let's go to Betsy Khan on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Green, I apologize, I did send an email-
I did send an email to Supervisor Sabatier and Mr. Rickelman last evening asking three specific questions about this proposal. I believe that your decision is too early. There are not, there are too many unknowns about how this will work, as you have discussed this afternoon. I have several questions that you can answer if you like. If you're already operating at a loss, where will the funds for the assessment come from? That doesn't make logical sense to me. And definitely, the item was presented on the agenda sponsored by the Administration Department, as though the county was sponsoring this activity. The resolution makes it sound as though the county is sponsoring this activity, not the actual hospitals. And the need for things like monitoring delivery or monitoring the deliverables that Ms. Jones just spoke about is not specified in there. The plan is extremely vague. There is no list of actual projects, and the plan itself says that the county may withdraw or use money in the account only for a purpose authorized in this plan. There are no purposes authorized. So this is really vague stuff. I think it's extremely important. We all do appreciate how essential these services are, that we could not survive without them. And the question as to the language about general acute care hospitals that also Ms. Jones referred to is extremely important. These are critical care hospitals. The loss of acute care services that are standard under the contract with the Red Bud Healthcare District by the Adventist Health Hospital in Clear Lake calls for the continuation of standard acute care services, but we do not have most of those. Definitely the seismic improvements and all that kind of stuff. That's, that's something that's on your bill, not ours. So I really would ask the supervisors to pause, take that plan, look at what is missing, consider the questions that I asked, and consider answering those questions clearly, and then explaining where the funding will come from, from the hospitals themselves if they're operating at a loss. Where will that money come from? Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. I do want to provide some answers to some of the questions. Mr. Rickelman?
Yeah, we can start. It is a little confusing with if they're assessing themselves, how are they getting more money back? And if council can explain that, that'd be appreciated.
Okay. Well, that's a cash flow issue. They're talking about cash flow, obviously, versus their net bottom line. They have to have money to pay their nurses, to pay their staff. They have cash. At the end of the year, when you add up all their expenses and all of their revenues, they're five and a half million dollars behind as of 2022. Is that what you're saying? So the cash comes out just like it pays anybody else. Any vendor that's in this room gets paid the same way. The state's just another vendor. The money comes back through the Medicaid program based on the number of Medi-Cal patients that they treat, that are in the Medicaid Managed Care Plan, that you and your county have a single Medicaid Managed Care Plan that runs. We'll go to the Medicaid Managed Care Plan and then increase the payment to each Medi-Cal patient that shows up in the door. That will obviously increase the revenue that they'll receive. And that is the general plan to generate additional revenue so they can improve their facilities and improve the delivery of care in the community.
And just even a simpler high level, so if this assessment's roughly $15 million annually, they're going through this whole process because they'll get more back from the federal government. So on net, it's roughly two to one, would you say?
It's, it's two to one as long as the state doesn't steal any.
So if they assess themselves 15, get 30 back, so on net, it would be 15. So that's why, you know, if the individual hospital's running a deficit, the overall Adventist and Sutter system supports it. But with this net increase, 30 minus 15, that's where you get the additional revenue when the process is complete.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think some of this has been explained. It's just, healthcare is a rather confusing and difficult matter on how it processes, and it constantly changes as well. So what you understood two years ago is completely different. And even now, we have on the ballot more things to change, how Medi-Cal interacts with our local hospitals. And so it's a moving target. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. I would like to add a comment to where the cash is coming from. So and if I can use the analogy of a child in college that's not paying their bills and you send them money to loan them to get through, what's happening now is Sutter and Adventist is sending us money to keep us open in that sense. So when we're five and a half million dollars short, Sutter is sending that money in to keep the hospital open and keep us viable. And I'm assuming that Adventist is doing the same thing on that. So it's mom and dad are sending money down to keep us viable. And people that have heard me talk in the community, have heard me talk about to grow in the community, we need to stand on our feet and be viable as much as we can, then I can get resources to do more in the community. Currently, and you have to say, when your kid wants a great birthday present, but you just sent him $2,000 to fix their car, you kind of want to say, that's your birthday present you just got. And that's what kind of, you know, I don't mean to trivialize it this much, but that's kind of what it is. When I go to Sutter and say, I need five and a half million dollars to open a clinic in Hidden Valley Lake, they're like, but we just gave you five and a half million dollars to stay open. So then we short-change the community in that sense. So we are working really hard to be viable and to stand on our feet, just like your college student is, so we can do more in, you know, for our community in a sense. Very simplistic in that, but that's an honest analogy of what's happening currently on that for Sutter.
Okay. And I think that was a response to all of the questions that we did receive from Ms. Khan. Just a quick question, and I'm going to bring it back. I'm going to close public comment. Not sure if it has to be implemented in this or if it's just something we can request, but it would be nice to have an annual report to us to let us know how this is being utilized for the community so that we can really visualize and see the actual community benefit that's coming from this system. And that will give us a better footing five years down the road of how we're going to make a decision if this is something we absolutely did not like and it did not benefit us whatsoever, or absolutely look what we've gained from doing things like this. And so I think that's, again, I don't know if it needs to be within this document before we approve it and put it out for a vote, or if it's just something that we can coordinate between one another, because I don't know that you're going anywhere at this moment in time that I'm aware of. So you'll still be here where we can find you.
So we're not approving a management plan today. There's just a draft one. All we're doing is passing a resolution of intention to start the process, so...
But I think it's important to know what we're passing to request people to review and if it needs to be changed so that it might be more palatable than, that's my question.
We would be very happy to provide an annual report.
Yeah, we've generally copied the Business Improvement District, so it was familiar to you guys. So that's why it looks very much like the Tourism District. But we can add anything specific that we want into the plan, whether you want a plan and MOU is all the same to us. Plan is a great place to put it. When it comes to costs, the law does allow you to recover your reasonable costs. So if the 1% isn't enough, then it would be more. They would just say, that doesn't cover our costs. If it was too much, in theory, they'd tell us that as well, but we think it'll be all right.
Okay.
But you should not end up, you will not end up negative. That's the guarantee the hospitals will make under any circumstance when it comes to the costs of the county putting stuff together.
Okay. I would like to propose that between, it's on page three? Yeah, page three, between where it says the proposed LCHID will have a five-year term beginning blah, blah, blah through June 30th, 2029, unless renewed pursuant to Streets and Highways Code 3660 period, that there's a new paragraph that says the LCHID will provide a summary report of benefits to hospitals and community based on the revenues received.
Were we including the behavioral health concerns as well, or is that for something different or later?
I think those are stronger conversations about, just because those are complex issues that do need to be discussed 100%. I absolutely support her comments. Those are difficulties that the hospitals are dealing with, but I don't know that we could put it in this. That's my personal opinion on that.
I mean, do we need to add it to this resolution, or can we just put it in the MOU?
In the management plan?
In the management plan.
I think it would make more sense to put it in the management.
Okay, okay. Well, I would like to see that in the management plan. Since we closed public comment, and if there's nothing further, looking for action. Yes, CAO Parker?
Yes, could you please instruct Johanna? Yes, please.
Can we please project Exhibit A on the share screen? This shows the map of what the district would look like. It's a very quick and simple map, but at least it would let everybody know what Exhibit A is. Obviously, it would be the entire county with also approval from the city of Clear Lake, and Lakeport would be cut out at this moment in time. Okay, thank you very much.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
I have a question. Do we need like a date that we're setting?
It says, says 45 days later. If we can create a date that would work out.
Are we scheduling like a killing or something?
Yes.
So do we need a scheduled schedule date?
So the next scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting with the 45-day buffer is November 5th?
That's not 45 days. Oh, November 5th, sorry, I heard October 5th in my mind. Okay. Definitely more than enough time for those 45 days, yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
No.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. Okay, do we need, County Council, do we need to specify a date of when public hearing will be, or that's separate?
No, eventually, the, well, only in reference to the blank space, blank portions of the resolution that's been adopted.
Gotcha.
Need to be filled out, but that can be handled by staff internally for, within compliance with that 45-day requirement.
Okay. So we will see each other again on November 5th, it appears. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. And just, I do want to respond, I apologize. There was a comment. This is a conversation that was brought to the county. This was not, we typically, and I've gotten upset about this before, nobody from the outside should be able to just place something on the agenda. They usually will work with a department head. Here, they worked with CAO Parker and her team and her staff, and they were interested in sharing this with the Board of Supervisors. If you want to see that as a sponsorship, that this was ours, that we created, that's an opinion you may have. But I know that I had a discussion with both hospitals prior to it going to the CAO. And these are things that we need to discuss. There's potential benefits to the community, so I appreciate your administrative staff and yourself working on this and bringing this to our attention. So I see no problems in that pathway. I think it's actually the better pathway than just letting anyone sponsor something from the outside of county on our agenda. Thank you all very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a quick 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 3:15.